I
Yes, the uh Studio controller.
Yeah.
Um, that's a kind of question. Wanted to try with them all. So, do you want my student all? I know much of my students.
Uh, it's actually hard. Go for it.
Recording in progress.
Called to order the in-person hybrid meeting of the Rendell City Council. Roll call please.
Mayor Garne, here. Mayor Tim Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Woodall.
Here.
Stand, stand for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are returning from closed session with nothing to report out. Your city manager, um, would you, uh, announce our protocol, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garne, members of the council, members of the public, welcome back. We are at our first meeting here in person in quite some time due to the events over the past couple of years. Uh, we are fortunate to be able to be here maskless if, uh, members of the, uh, public attending are vaccinated. If you are not vaccinated, we do request, um, that you grab a mask back here and go ahead and don it. Um, we are just using the, the trust system, uh, in that regard. Uh, and even if you are vaccinated and wish to wear a mask, um, we, uh, you know, recommend, uh, and advise you to go ahead and, and do that. Uh, so with that, we are using a hybrid system to allow for this in-person meeting while it's also displayed, uh, here on Zoom, uh, for remote attendees. Uh, in order for them to hear you, you are going to have to speak very loudly, uh, and clearly, uh, and slowly. Um, so that's just some of the limitations of our, of our system, uh, with the owl setup, uh, to, uh, to keep down on costs of, uh, of a fully automated and edited, um, system. Uh, so, uh, with that, we do have, uh, you may notice one seat is empty. Councilmember Wilson, uh, did, uh, report an exposure at work, uh, earlier today based on my advice to him. Uh, he is staying home, uh, today and attending the meeting remotely. Um, so again, that is an option for any member of the public, uh, who, uh, and the council wishing to, uh, to attend these meetings. So really want to thank everybody for being here. This is very exciting for us to be back in person. And, uh, and again, uh, we, the dial-up number will be occasionally displayed on the Zoom, uh, along with the access code. And then, uh, if, uh, I'm remembering correctly, it's, uh, star nine, uh, to raise your hand and star four or star six, excuse me, uh, to unmute yourself, uh, if you are attending, uh, tonight's meeting, uh, remotely. And we'll make sure, uh, during the public comment areas to take enough time to make sure that we're checking both email submissions and public comment, uh, public comments via Zoom and then obviously also our attendees at the meeting here tonight. Uh, so with that, thank you, Mayor Garne, so, uh, return to the floor, do you?
Thank you. Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with councilor staff is not allowed under the Ralph Numground Act. Items requiring council action not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration of the council direct, unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Anyone feel free to step up to the podium. Welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening, guys. My name is Yama. I own one of the farms up on the Dinsmore Plateau. And, uh, we don't have, uh, commercial greenhouses. We have, um, we basically have cold frames. We don't actually have lighting in the greenhouses. And there's a big distinction between the two. If you do have commercial greenhouses, or you can run, or, and you can do large amounts of production. But the tax bracket is the same across the board. You know, so it's $2 a square foot basically for any cultivation on your, you know, ordinance is what it says. So what I'd like to propose is a reconsideration of the taxes for, you know, if you have a cold frame greenhouse where you don't have any lights in it, there has to be some kind of, you know, consideration on reduction of taxes because you only do one to two runs a year. And as you guys know, there's a lot of moisture here, there's a lot of cloud cover, you know, so you're not going to get the highest yields, you know? And in order to run, you know, profit profitability, you have to build commercial and your substation is under power here. So if there's not power available to even upgrade for commercial growth. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and, you know, your consideration to possibly bring the, you know, taxes down a little bit to, you know, some kind of, kind of outdoor amount of tax as opposed to the, you know, full commercial taxes that we're paying. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you, councilmembers. Just to provide some clarification, uh, my name is Kelly Fodas with Parker Advisors. We support local farms in, uh, Humboldt County. And in the Humboldt County ordinance, there is distinction between outdoor and mixed light. Outdoor is defined as not using artificial light. Mixed light is with artificial light. And the tax tiers are based on those definitions, outdoor versus mixed light versus indoor. So we do recommend that the city, uh, take that into consideration to have a more fair, uh, tax system with, uh, the farmers and based on their production of the system. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello. Hi, my name is Tom Norton. Um, I'm also a farm owner up there on the top deal. Um, and, uh, just like what he said is, um, it, it is different and stuff. But I know, um, for me personally, I know that we did sign up for the $2 a square, square foot. Um, but me and like these other two, um, were struggling to survive with the way that prices have dropped. Uh, we are also first year time growers up there. We're still in the middle of our bill. I know me personally, I also know with these guys, we're still in the process of trying to build to complete completion. Uh, we're, we're only, we're, we're not corporations. We're by ourselves, same sole providers with our own savings. Um, and we're just pretty much looking for some type of break because I know you guys are quarterly and we, we did sign up for it, but we, we do need help at, at the same time as well.
Thank you. Are there any hand raised or emails? Yes, I have a hand raised, hand raised. Welcome, angry person.
Hi there. Hi there, this is Sandy DeLuca.
And Michael Monahan.
And we are local real estate agents that, that have a niche in the cannabis industry. And we wanted to stand up and stand with the farmers in your community to, to also, uh, stand behind the fact that, that these businesses bring in tax dollars to your community and to the, the county as well. And with that, we want to help the county or the city understand that we're trying to teach these, or treat these businesses as young businesses and assist them as they get their foot in the industry. And we're, we are also asking Rio Del to, to consider lowering that tax rate now and moving forward. And, and also, uh, compare it against the county with the measure S. And in, in the county, they dropped their fee by 85% moving forward. And we're hoping that Rio Del will consider something similar. And if you read the measure S taxes that the, uh, the county is using, that is, the, the, the number that's being charged has been the top number. And it should be fluctuating as we know that the product itself, that the, the commodity of cannabis is going to fluctuate throughout the process of legalization. And we're hoping that the city will recognize that we all want these business to survive. And if, and, and in order for them to survive, we need to assist them while they're going through this process of, of this new industry, if that makes sense.
And this is Michael Monahan speaking. And so that $2 a square foot is an indoor type of break. And if there is power available, it'd be a little different. I, from the beginning, I thought $2 is somewhat outrageous, but that's me. And if there's no power available up there on the plateau, you know, you can't, they, they cannot produce the product and the quality of the product that $2 a square foot commands. And another thing, I also kind of wonder why these people being charged in January and February and March, they're not harvesting any product. So they're just working and paying taxes constantly and they're not seeing anything, but they're paying it all, you know? So I want to put that out there as well.
And so the, the idea is, is without the businesses, there's no tax dollars. So what we need to do is we as a community need to stand behind these businesses and allow them to get their feet settled in this industry so they are able to be successful. And when they're successful, we will all benefit.
And that's what we want. That is the end goal. Is everybody hearing us?
Are you, are you done? I didn't want to cut you off. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, see man. Okay, we'll talk to you again soon.
Okay. Are there any more hand raised or emails?
Mayor Garne, we did receive one public comment, um, during the last meeting, but due to some computer difficulties, we didn't get it. So I'll just read it now, for the benefit. It's from Stephen Sharon Wolf and they said, are the 5% increases for salary and benefits that are recommended in the rate study on top of the recent raises staff received? So I just wanted, I didn't want to give away no other.
Thank you. There's no other email? Yeah. And no other hand raised? Thank you then, I will close public presentation and we move on to the consent calendar. Is there anyone who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Are there any, is there, is there anyone in the audience that would like to remove anything in the consent calendar? And no emails or hand raised? And I will ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Mayor Garne, to remove for approval of the consent calendar.
You have a motion and there's a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Oh, wait.
Um, Frank, are you there? Is he? Is Frank on the line? Do you know?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Frank, so do you approve of the consent calendar?
I'm, I'm fine with it.
Motion carries five, thank you. Motion carries five zero. Now we move on to communicate reports from staff communication, city manager. Page twenty-two in your package.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Garne, members of the council. I have, uh, very good news to announce. Uh, the council may recall, the public may recall that the city, uh, submitted, uh, two clean California grants. And so this was a program, uh, announced by Governor Gavin Newsom, a brand-new program, uh, to beautify, uh, California's, uh, public spaces, reduce litter, uh, and, uh, really instill pride in, in, uh, in the state of California. And, uh, so the, uh, council recently formed a, uh, beautification, lockability and pride committee. Uh, that committee made recommendations to, uh, submit, uh, a, uh, application package that included the, uh, Eel River Bike Trail, uh, a short trail from Members Drive, uh, to Davis Street along the river, uh, there, uh, as well as a Rio Del Gateway Beautification Project, which would essentially, uh, uh, plant new trees, add exercise stations in, uh, Memorial Park, uh, and rehabilitate, uh, the gateway and add to it. I'm very excited to announce that the city was, uh, awarded both grants. Uh, so not just one, but both. Uh, the total amount of the grants, uh, is very close to about two and a half million dollars. So that's uh, incredible news. Um, obviously that's the, the work of a lot of people over a long period of time. Uh, that, uh, you know, this, uh, the idea of the bike trail for Rio Del has, has been around for probably at least five years. Uh, and, uh, we have applied for numerous grant opportunities to deny except for this one. Um, so we're very excited about that and also, uh, to really, you know, create Gateway 2.0, one that's, uh, a little bit more water efficient, one that includes trees that will grow taller, uh, as well as exercise stations for the public. So this is really exciting news, um, very, very, uh, very, very excited. Um, and we'll be working on it because there is a very, very short timeline in terms of construction and, uh, and the projects need to be completed by 2024, which in government terms is, is a, a very short amount of time for a construction project. Um, in other, in other means, I do want to make the council aware, uh, you know, I received a phone call from Mayor Garne earlier this morning that, uh, some suspicious emails were going around copying, uh, uh, staff's names as well as local, uh, neighboring entities' names, uh, in, uh, in emails that appear to be from those officials. Over the course of the day, we have received numerous warnings from both state and other local agencies, uh, that their emails that also were also being impersonated. Um, so I don't know why that is the case, that there is, uh, this is the most, uh, uh, impersonated emails I've ever seen occur amongst local agencies all in one day. So it's really important that when, uh, you believe that you're receiving an email from the city of Rio Del, or really anybody else, um, that you really verify, uh, the email address that it is being sent from and do not open suspicious emails. Uh, you can always call, uh, City Hall if you believe, um, that, uh, an email may be being sent, uh, improperly, uh, but we are concerned, you know, for staff, uh, for members of the council, for, uh, the general public that, uh, there appears to be, uh, an explosion of, of, uh, impersonated emails. And I just wanted to, uh, put that out there. Uh, in terms of the staff updates, uh, we are working on and have issued our bid for our asphalt improvement project for this year. Uh, we are initiating a chief of police recruitment, uh, for the chief of police, uh, position, uh, here in the city. Uh, we expect to, uh, close that initial round of inter, uh, of resumes and, uh, uh, cover letter submissions, uh, at the end of March. Um, so if you know of anybody who might be interested, please pass along that information, uh, to them. Uh, in other news, uh, the Federal Emergency Management Agency has denied the county's appeal for a soldier pile wall on the Monument Ridge Slipout, uh, just up the hill towards the Dinsmore Plateau. Uh, as the council is aware, we have been working with the county on that particular issue and the delays are really related to, um, uh, engineering debates between the federal government and the state and, uh, and county and city. Uh, the state, county and city are all aligned in terms of the solution for that particular project, but FEMA is demanding a, a cheaper solution to that. So there is a, a, a second appeal process, uh, that potentially involves arbitration. And I expect to have at the council's next meeting, uh, an item on the agenda, uh, in terms of cost sharing for the appeal process related to that, uh, because we will need to be, uh, involving a consultant in that process to help, uh, get that solution permanently fixed. Uh, and then as, uh, folks have probably seen here over the past couple of weeks, uh, the City Hall, uh, solar project and energy islanding project, which includes batteries and backup generator, uh, is mostly complete. Uh, we are waiting for a, uh, sign-off from Pacific Gas and Electric to activate, uh, the solar grid and battery system and have it connected to the grid. Um, uh, but this is a, a 22 kilowatt system. Uh, and we did turn it on during, uh, the middle of the bad weather to, uh, recently to see how things were working, uh, towards the, uh, early morning and we got about 12.7 KW entering the rain, which is actually just even that level. Uh, it's more than enough to power City Hall, charge the batteries, uh, and return excess power back to the grid. So we're really excited about that. Uh, the generators will be installed, uh, most likely in, uh, May or June, uh, of this year due to supply chain issues and getting them here. Uh, but that project is, uh, is 95% complete at this point in time. We're excited with the, uh, the results of that. And again, just if anybody has any questions about that project specifically, uh, was 100% grant funded, uh, through the state of California as a result of the, uh, public safety power shut-off emergency, the last emergency before the, the last one. Um, so, uh, folks may recall several days of power outages. And so the city, uh, did receive approximately $300,000, uh, in funding, uh, to help realize this project and also help our wastewater fund, uh, with a lift station generator. So that's very exciting news. Uh, with that, I will return it back to the mayor, see if there's any questions of staff.
Thank you, city manager. Mayor from Tim Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Garne. So Kyle, I was, uh, absolutely pleased to hear about the grant, uh, from the state of California for, you know, the, and the work that, uh, the Lockability Pride Beautification Committee has done, uh, shouldn't go unrewarded. And I was hopeful that you would, uh, notify the public members of that committee that, uh, that they can share in our enthusiastic, uh, response. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall, you know, questions I gave when we staffed, probably yesterday, I got my question.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Uh, no questions, just really happy about those grants. Coming up with plans or, uh, things I'm gonna do. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes, um, congratulations on, on the good news about the grant. We're excited about that, of course. Uh, the other thing is, and along with what Kyle said, I also received about a half a dozen emails from a, a member of the HWMA, uh, former board, uh, that were bogus, uh, emails that come from somebody with an address in Japan. So, um, just to reiterate what he said, you need to be aware of what emails are coming to you. That's all I know.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to make a comment or ask a question? Are you done? Are there any hands raised? Any emails? Okay, well then, um, I just want to thank staff for everything that they did and the engineers and, um, just getting the grass and getting, we got them, yay! And, you know, the, the solar grant, that's also another amazing, awesome thing that, uh, benefits the city. And, and I appreciate all that the staff has done. And with that, we will close. Staff reports and move on to special presentation. Page twenty, porch light campaign fiscal year 21, 22, page 25 in our package. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garne and members of the council. I'm just gonna verify that we got Travis on the line. I don't have a computer in front of me.
We do.
And Travis, uh, why don't you go ahead and take it away?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor Garne and fellow city council members. The city of Rio Del, with support through Redwood Coast Energy Authority, is helping enhance the safety of the community while staying energy efficient by offering residents new highly efficient LED light bulbs for their front porch lights. Porch lighting has been proven as an effective deterrent in reducing criminal activity while having the added benefit of assisting public safety officials, including first responders, identify addresses when responding to emergencies. In areas where street lighting may be insufficient, a porch light can assist in safely navigating outside the home. The city of Rio Del is offering every resident a free energy efficiency kit with the support of Redwood Coast Energy Authority. These kits will include a highly efficient LED light bulb, among other items meant to assist in curtailing your energy usage and subsequently your power bill. According to the U.S. Department of Energy, LED lights use at least 75% less energy, costing only pennies a day to operate and lasts up to 25 times longer than incandescent lighting. The city is committed to helping our residents stay safe and energy efficient. I want to thank you all for your time this evening and I look forward to answering any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you, Travis. Are there any questions from council? Senator Carter? What else? Mayor Rockton? Councilmember Wilson?
Uh, no questions on this. Um, I know RCA is doing a lot of programs and that's, um, good that it's one that we could participate in.
All right, thank you. And, um, I would just, my only question I think is how does, how are they going to reach the citizens? Do we, do they have to come in or?
So if we're gonna start, uh, advertising the, the program and I think their RCA is, is talking about distributing 50 packets at a time. So we're gonna have kind of a slow rollout, uh, with this. Uh, but we do want to advertise it and I do want to, you know, specifically also just really, uh, thank Travis for flushing this out with, uh, with RCA and, and originally we were thinking that this might end up being a city-funded project. Uh, but the, the importance of having lighting at night, uh, in terms of public safety is, is really, really important. This new LED technology allows us, uh, to be able to create a safer community, safer neighborhoods for relatively low cost and help lower, uh, kind of some of the petty crime, late-night crime hopefully in, in the community. So, so thank you, Travis. And, uh, and then again, uh, just to further flesh out the mayor's question, uh, people would be coming up to City Hall and, uh, and collecting the packets. And we do need a motion.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And, and I would say that, uh, you know, much like the volunteer program that we had, uh, during COVID, people who cannot get here, we will figure out some way to get the, the kits to them, I would hope. So is there, um, harder, hand raised? Emails? Questions from the, uh, audience? Welcome.
Well, you mentioned the volunteers. I'm also thinking about the elderly and the city board.
That's what I'm
Who might have their porch light really high where they need someone with a ladder to help.
With that, awesome.
That is something to consider.
Right, and thank you for that.
Thank you.
So is there a motion to approve the porch light campaign for fiscal year 21, 22? I will make that motion. We have a motion and there's a second?
Second.
All, we vote. Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Vote, motion carries five zero. Now we will move on to the presentation of the 2021 Then we will move on to the presentation of the 2021, 22 mid-year financial report. Page 137 in our package. City members.
I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over to our finance director, Cheryl.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Okay, so the report, and hopefully I can talk loud enough. I lose my voice, which sounds like I'm going to just because I'm thinking about it. So the report starts on page 28. And this report is the mid-year review of how budget looks for 21, 22. And it also sort of starts to kick off what they're gonna look like for 22, 23. Although that's not covered in here, but that's what's going through my head when I look at what's happening during the middle of the year. And so basically, the highlights are that overall city revenues at mid-year were higher than city expenditures. However, that was primarily due to advanced funding received for the power resiliency project that Kyle discussed, the solar and the generators. So we got that in advance, which is actually quite unusual for grants. Usually, they reimburse you after you spend money. And then we also received some American Rescue Plan funding that we will be spending on future projects. So when you adjust those out, revenues were below expenditures by $520,083, which is really close to what we spent on capital projects, which was $561,660. So it's not unusual for, capital projects are coming out of reserves, so it's not unusual for that to cause the revenues to be lower than the expenses. That being said, though, the property tax, which comes in from the county, is always comes in in February or March. And so we haven't received that, which is one of the largest sources of funding for the general fund. So as you go down, you can see that overall revenues as of mid-year of this year were 40% collected compared to 49% last year. And that's primarily due to reduced cannabis revenues being received at mid-year and the elimination of CARES Act funding. And then we've got some variations in building revenues, which were slightly higher. We're seeing more activity in building permits. And then streets and that supplementary law enforcement services fund, those funds are coming in. There's been some delays in getting those funds dispersed to the city from the county. So if you, you know, at the bottom of page 28, there's a table that shows the different funds and it shows the revenues. And you can see that the one that has the least coming in is the general fund at 22%, but I'm not concerned because those funds are there. They just haven't been sent to us. And streets is the same thing. It's, those funds are out of state. They just haven't been, they run out two months behind. And then when we get into expenditures, citywide, we have a table that shows by department. And pretty much everybody is slightly below. Two that stand out are planning is only 5% expended, but that's primarily due to the fact that we have a housing grant, housing planning grant that hasn't been expended. And so if we remove that grant, then it's on target. And then recycling's over expended because we need to do a budget adjustment because the recycling, the new recycling cans were budgeted last year but came out of this. And I think that covers. So, and also just on my preliminary review of mid-year, well, it was pretty extensive review of mid-year. That it looks to me like we will be able to cover the salary increases that we did without having to do a budget adjustment. If we do need to do any budget adjustments, I think they will be minor or we'll be able to move funds around. So I don't anticipate that we will necessarily have to dip into reserve or do anything like that. And that's primarily because we now have one vacant officer position and some staffing savings. So then we go on to the general fund. And I've already kind of talked about the revenue being at 22%. So we can focus in on cannabis, which we'd only received 19% of cannabis revenues at mid-year. And depending how things turn out, they can be much lower than budgeted. So this, I don't want to speak to this, but, you know, this is a revenue source that fluctuates. And we haven't had it very long. And we base the budget on the information we have based on permits that were issued. And some things have changed. And so this is basically what it looks like mid-year. The top three revenue sources in the general fund are property tax and vehicle fees, which the, like, there's a list here that basically shows the types of revenue. And so you've got, those are coming in on target and slightly higher. Then the retail sales tax is coming in on budget, maybe slightly higher. Not, there wasn't as much growth in sales tax this year as there was last year. So I'm gonna say that COVID is, people have gone back to buying things outside of Ria del, perhaps because they're moving around more. COVID was actually good for us for sales tax, but not for rest of the country. And then we have a graph that basically, I guess these people can't see it, so I probably shouldn't point each other forward, but the council has it. It just shows that basically we have gotten to, you know, ideally a somewhat diversified portfolio of revenue in the general fund with property taxes making up about a third, and then cannabis, and then sales tax. And we have the measured day and we have the Bradley Burns. And then we get into expenditures. They were at 36% of budget. And primarily, that difference is due to expenditures on capital projects that are just starting to gear up right now for the fiscal year. And street funds are, revenues are 50% and 36% for the highway user tax. The TDA and RSTP funds, which are dispersed locally, we haven't received any yet. It's anticipated we will get those funds at the end of the fiscal year. So that's caused that to be under budgeted mid-year, but not anticipated to be a trend that will continue. It's just gonna come in towards the end of the year. And expenditures are also just about on target. Then we get into the sewer and water funds. And those revenues are just about, like, 51% received. This doesn't get much better than that as far as budgeting. And this year, we didn't have any growth in the sewer or water funds because the CPI, CPI had expired. So we're just basically rebudgeting the same amount that we received the prior year. And we're in the middle of doing the rate study, which we will discuss in April. And that will look forward to adjusting revenues to correspond with actual expenditures. And expenditures at this point in sewer are 41% of expended at mid-year. And in the water funds, they're 50%. The water fund has been spending more aggressively this year than in past years. And then we flip over and talk about the budget outlook, which is why I was saying this kind of feeds into what 22, 23 looks like. And when we start looking at, you know, what we'll have to work with for next year and looking at revenues. And the, basically, there are a few items that we need to keep our attention on. And those are trying to look at how cannabis revenues are going to come in and how we are going to budget and plan for those and support our local farmers. And then the sewer funds and the rate study and street-based formulas for street revenues are still not sufficient to cover the cost of making our roads, which is why the general fund has been using one-time funding to help get the roads paved, which fortunately, those will last probably for a while. And economic outlook is very hard to forecast right now. We've got inflation, we've got, I'm gonna use the same, the war word. And we, you know, still got issues from the pandemic and supply chain issues. And then overall revenues are still at historic highs. However, operating costs are also growing and are unfortunately hard to.
So if I could summarize Cheryl's presentation, overall, the budget is on track to where it is, to where it needs to be with one pretty significant exception. And that is that cannabis revenues have been negatively impacted by a slump in the cannabis pricing and activity during the first half of this year. So as the council is aware, we know that this is going to be a highly volatile source of revenue. It's the polar opposite of property tax revenue, which is highly predictable. You can do significant long-term projections that are highly accurate. With cannabis, it's very much the opposite. Last year, the city had an extremely good year in terms of tax revenues. And we do know that this year, we won't be seeing quite as much revenue in this year. Many Northern California cultivators are concerned that they will not survive the current market conditions. Humboldt County and some other Northern California agencies have lowered or suspended their cannabis taxes. However, the state taxes remain unaltered and compose the clear majority of cannabis taxation. So that money is pulled up into the state coffers roughly, I think, over $700 million annually. And only, we're only seeing a piece of that trickle back to the local economy in terms of grants through project trust. The county's been doing a great job in terms of working that program out. But we're not seeing quite the investment in law enforcement that was expected to, in code enforcement, to help eliminate some of the illegal cannabis growing. The market slump and its impacts appear to be particularly acute for outdoor cultivation, which is not allowed in Ria del and for non-electrified cultivation. And as has been discussed with the council before, cannabis will remain volatile. Staff believes the city overall is still well-positioned in the long term with a comprehensive and well-fout-out local regulatory approach that the council worked on, as you guys are well aware, of multiple, multiple meetings, over 60 meetings, to try to create a regulatory framework from the bottom to the top. And we also lack some of the issues that our friends in the county face, which is some of the legacy grows and regulatory and financial hurdles associated with making those grows legal. We do have certain advantages. That includes municipal infrastructure and, you know, relatively short amount of time for city staff to go and inspect and do their work to ensure that there's compliance with the law. We're not paying inspectors to sit 45 minutes in a car, driving one way and 45 minutes back. There are a number of benefits to being here in Ria del. That includes the responsiveness of the city to the industry, which we take very seriously. So with that, you know, we are in a slump in the market. And but overall, even if you look at our current cannabis revenues, we're actually very diversified, not just in the overall financial picture, but we're also diversified in cannabis itself. We have retail, we have manufacturing, and we have different types of cultivation. So we have a really rounded revenue source here that, again, in the long term, is still gonna be a source of revenue for the city into the future. It's really a question of size and making sure that we're listening to the industry and making appropriate judgment calls to maximize the benefit, not just for the city, but for the industry, tying the city and the industry together to do these wonderful projects like paving below out to CC Market and some of our paid projects coming up. So we're excited to work with the industry and the larger community to make this work for everybody. So with that, unless Cheryl has anything else to add, go ahead and turn it to the mayor, see if there's any additional comments.
Thank you. Mayor from town, Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Darnes. Thank you, Kyle and Cheryl, for just a wonderful presentation. I would request that the council agenda is an item to, maybe at our next meeting, if it's possible, to look at the tax structure for cannabis and especially the greenhouse. See if we can provide some relief. Also, Cheryl, is there, you anticipate there's going to be any difficulty getting our tax money from the county?
That will get it.
And their difficulties are well documented in the press. And hopefully, it won't spill over to municipalities. Thank you. That's all, Mayor Darnes.
Councilmember Wilson?
I don't really have any comments on that, although, because we're still early in the year. But it, I expect to see the income coming in on the, on the cannabis to be lower because of just everything associated with that. So that's not really surprising. And the state's not really being a helpful, really helpful for the amount of money that is benefiting from it. It's not really giving it back to the local jurisdictions. That's disappointing. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Woll. I just second Mayor from town Johnson's idea of putting it on the next agenda so we can take a look at it. I think it's an important issue to take a look at. And I have no other questions on the. Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
I third. Yeah, I would like to take a look at that, too. And I have no questions. Cheryl, thank you. Post-graduate forward and have a spot. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we have the general final consensus on the agenda item. And now I call.
Just want to make sure the clerk notes the consensus of the council for that to be brought back.
Thank you. And are there any questions from the audience? On the budget?
On the budget?
On the budget.
No.
Okay. We're coming to the first one. Right now, we're talking about it. Thank you. Are there any hands raised or emails? Okay, then. I think, thank you, Cheryl, for that presentation. Appreciate it. And we have a consensus, so I think we can close that and move on.
And I have a long drive. I'm not used to being here this late, so I'm.
Be safe.
Thank you.
Well, now move on to our next presentation. Margot Badgins, Republican, Ria del Harvest Fair related to cannabis.
In regards to the last item presented, we're able to provide some information with regards to taxes, both in the state of California, in the area, and in our municipal. We'll go with that information. Esteemed Mayor Darnes, city council members, thank you very much for allowing us this opportunity to present an outline for a unique harvest fair in Ria del. My name is Suzanne Mays. This is Kelly Cortez. We're owners of Margaradvisors, a local consulting firm helping cannabis farmers in Humboldt County with licensing permitting and compliance requirements. We're standing before you today, this evening, because of the current decline in wholesale cannabis market prices. It's having an impact on our Humboldt County economy. While these are challenging times, it is our firm belief that our local cannabis farm community would be supported by efforts to provide a local cannabis event. These events potentially could serve to provide. These events potentially could serve to provide a boost to the region's brand recognition for high-quality craft cannabis products. They would serve as a networking space to bring buyers, both wholesale and retail, from all over California to build new opportunities here locally. We believe a farmers' market setting will enable participants to enjoy the outdoors and the beautiful surroundings of Riedel while listening to music, eating local foods, while they meet our local farmers. The objectives to have a harvest festival are many. We hope to reinforce the region's brand recognition for high-quality craft cannabis by bringing in visitors from across California. And most importantly, allow our farmers to shine with a direct sales experience between farmers and consumers, as well as licensed wholesale buyers. This event would bring visitors who would otherwise not know of the city of Riedel. It would create new opportunities for local businesses. Um, it would support our Riedel cannabis companies through participation at this event. It would provide a fundraising event for our local fire departments by hosting a beer garden area and provide a platform for for local artists to share their talents. Such an event would allow the opportunity to showcase the city's economic development and supporting the cannabis industry. We find that this is very, very important, and we hope that you folks would take advantage of this opportunity. We could invite local and state officials to partake in discussions of key issues. We may hold panel discussions on the stage or have presenters discussing sustainable farming practices. It's limitless what we could provide on agenda, an agenda for such an event. It has the opportunity to host a lot of potential good work to do within the industry right here in Riedel. One of our main objectives in holding this event is to divine, define and develop a turnkey event model for farmers to have direct consumer experience within the legal parameters of the complex regulations. Can't stress how important this is. Uh, we see this as an education. We see this also as an education opportunity with an education area dedicated as a place for local farm community to share directly with the consumers and the visitors our history and the culture of cannabis here in Humboldt. We have a very aggressive timeline for this event. We have earmarked the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth of September. It's a Saturday and Sunday. The event would be from ten AM to six PM. Uh, with feedback from tonight from the council, we expect to submit an application to the city within a few weeks. We would then work to secure infrastructure, food trucks, stands, uh participants, invite arts and craft vendors, and secure the entertainment. The state license application will be filed once the city provides local authorization. Once we get all approvals lined up, we would launch a media rollout. We've prepared a preliminary site plan, which outlines sixty-five thousand square feet of cannabis consumption and sales and fifteen thousand square feet of cannabis education area. This education area is where our farmers would meet and greet potential buyers and visitors. This is depicted in the white shaded area across the street at Memorial Park. And due to regulations, this would be a fully contained, fully enclosed area, both for the education area and for the event consumption area. Okay, next slide. Okay, we have prepared a preliminary site plan. That's what we've seen. Um, sorry, I lost my place. From this plan, you'll see that the area will be fenced, and there are twenty-one and over age limits, uh which will be strictly enforced. The point of sales are highlighted uh with orange and green circles. The food trucks are shown in purple, and you can go back and take a look at that. Oh, okay. They're shown in purple, and the green and yellow and blue rectangles are indicated as booths, either industry booth booths or uh arts and crafts booths or um farmers, farm booths, sorry. And in the bottom uh right corner, southern portion of the consumption area where the green is shown, that's where we are continuing with the stage. Okay, next slide, sorry about that. Our initial plan is to have ten local artists, ten craft, or ten local artists in a craft booth by food trucks. The fire department will host a beer and wine garden at their location nearby. We're looking for ten industry-type booths, which will serve as the primary sponsorship and fundraising. There will be four points of sales for retail packaged ready products, twenty cannabis farm tables, a stage, portable bathrooms, some twenty, some two thousand square feet, two thousand feet of privacy fencing. And we will also be approaching the two operating dispensaries in town to invite them to also participate at their location and/or at the dispensing license area within the consumption area. Um, this was our first attempt at a traffic flow diagram. We have taken feedback from various city departments, and we will continue to develop the traffic flow plan for the supplemental with the application. Um, this slide shows a little bit more of a better view of the area impacted by the event. Okay. Two firms will be participating in organizing this event. It will be Humboldt Harvest Events Corp. They will submit the local application, plan, and secure the infrastructure, appoint employees and volunteers, and hold all the contracts for the event, such as insurances and security. RDHF twenty-two will coordinate the licensed cannabis participants and apply for the state temporary cannabis event license. Within the state license system, RDHF twenty-two will apply for two licenses. The organizer license is responsible to maintain the cannabis event space, post signage, provide a list of participants, including suppliers, and provide a site plan for approval. The event license regulates the display of product products, the use of exit packaging, enforces age restrictions and daily sales limits, ensures all the activities are recorded in the trap and trace metric system, and that no samples are provided to the public. We will continue to develop strong promotions uh and media strategy to reach around California. We're looking to at the development of local of social media, a website, print promotional materials. Uh, we'll send invitations to legislative stakeholders and licensed industry wholesale buyers and dispensary owners. An event map will be developed to include the other points of interest in the city to be distributed at the events. We will develop press release, the press kit, and that will be sent to the news outlets. And lastly, our work is currently under development for T-shirts and posters. The artwork will highlight the spotted owl, yellow-legged frog, and the marble morlet, all endangered species to Humboldt, all which we become very familiar with during this cannabis process. So we will reach out to all local licensed Riedel holders and invite them to participate in this event, either as a channel partner, a sponsor, or just a participant. No local licensed holder will not be contacted. They are, they are our first right-of-refusal team. And we do have to compile the team prior to getting the license and name all the licensed participants within that application as well. Highly regulated, very um, a lot of hoops to jump through. Uh, but we are compliance consultants and feel like we can handle it, and it's almost our it's our task to do this because I do think it will help and our farmers' community suffer. So we're looking forward to bringing this new and exciting event to Rio, Riedel, and we appreciate your consideration and are available to answer your questions.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that presentation.
Thank you.
So I wish Captain Hall for any questions? Councilmember Carr?
Thank you. Um, listen, I like any kind of farmers' market. I I like my, I like your emphasis on education, and I like um that you are doing awesome work on licensing and the, you know, the legal part of things. That's the only thing that was worrisome to me, but it sounds like you're the people to deal with that. And um, that's my birthday weekend, so.
Mine, too. Let's celebrate together.
I'm not different, but thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Portem?
Thank you, Mayor Dinesh. I I really like the concept. I really am not sold on the location. Uh, we have established Humboldt Riedel Business Park uh for cannabis. And I myself think it would be more appropriate to hold farmers' market type thing out there in that, you know, all that acreage out there. That's that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Well, now I have several questions. You ever had a fair like, will this be the first one you've had a fair like this?
Yes.
Okay, um, have you talked to the fire department about the um beer and wine garden?
Yes, we had a very productive meeting with them.
And they they liked the idea? Oh, good. Um, the fencing will be all the way around, and it'll be privacy fencing?
Completely, yes.
Okay, and on the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth, did you check and make sure there was no other events? Because.
We have been working with staff here.
No, I didn't like.
Oh.
Oh, um, the Beer Festival in Fortuna, uh, certain ones that would conflict with.
Apple Festival.
Uh, Apple Festival, I mean, I was just wondering if you wouldn't want to.
We did a cursory look at other cannabis events. We didn't do every farm-type event.
Oh, no, I just didn't like um, you, I'm not sure if it's since September, they have the Beer Festival in um the park in Fortuna. It'd just be kind of sad to.
Yeah, no, we can check that.
And how how many security people would we have?
It all depends on the the requirements. We haven't taken a deep dive for such things as the amount of security and the limitation of space versus participants, things like that.
Okay, a little bit, whatever we require of security.
Yes, that would be part of our.
We have a plan.
Yeah, okay. And um, that was all the questions I had. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Uh, it's it's a big undertaking, big undertaking. It'll be interesting to see what becomes of it, uh, and that I really haven't got a lot to say.
Thank you. And I, yeah, I'm I'm excited. I think that um, I think it will draw people here, even if we are competing with another event. I think that um the opportunity to invite other elected officials from outside of Riedel, from outside of Humboldt County, I think that would be a huge thing um to be able to do and to get um uh officials here where we can show show up what's happening here, that um we can demonstrate the success, our success story that we've had. And so I am very excited that this, if this can happen, I would be fully supportive of it. Um, I think that you're going to give us a plan that's gonna cover all of the realities, all of the security, and um, and that's really what we have to to base everything on. If if the plan is solid and legal and secure, I think that it's just gonna be, uh, it would, it would be a great event. And um, I I definitely appreciate you bringing it forward. Um, and so are there any, any questions from the audience?
I think it's a great idea. Um, I do definitely think about looking at the, if there is any conflicting um things. I did go to uh the Beer Festival there in Fortuna, and they, it fell on the same time as the horse races did, and the attendance was low. Um, I also um think that having it here would be amazing because it, uh, that the traffic, like if we put it over there at the business park, we're not going to get a lot of the flow that comes from it that will help the neighboring stores, um restaurants, or like the bar, local stuff like that, so.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? Are there any um hand raised?
No.
Are there any emails?
Yes, we did receive two emails.
Thank you.
So the first one is, uh, which is, "Good evening, members of the city council. Let me not beat about the bush. The placement of this cannabis event in one word is stupid. The center of town would not work and would end up violating too many laws to ever be able to continue." First off is the laws. In my own words, the actual wording will be at the end, in case you need or want them to read them to you. The issue is followed by other options, as I see them. Laws. No one can smoke or ingest cannabis products while driving or riding in any vehicle. Access must be limited to twenty-one, and consumption cannot be visible from any public place or non-age-restricted area. The Civic Avenue runs right behind the area suggested and is in clear view of the entire area. There's no way to stop anyone or any age from sitting and watching the whole proceedings. State law prohibits smoking of any kind within twenty feet of all doors and opening windows on government buildings. Violating this can end up with fines upwards of seven thousand dollars. The the smell laws, both state and county, are another issue. Parking, where are we planning to park all these cars that are, that all these people are going to show up at? I hope no one says the school. No cannabis would go a thousand feet of a place by law. There are private homes in the area, small children, and therefore going to be issues. Traffic for such a large event, that means a large volume of traffic. Therefore, we couldn't block our main artery as suggested options. I have exactly four suggestions. Maybe my suggestions aren't to your liking, but maybe they might spark an idea for some, some, something else. The Disney Plateau, this area has great view, farms for touring, easily controlled access. The Business Park across the river, business for tours, easily controlled access, a reason to clean it up. The Metropolitan Field that belongs to the city. Nice-looking area, easily, easily controlled access. The River Bar, out of the way, reminiscent of Red Bull River. I hope that the council will take will and well-being of the people and not just the money the town can make into consideration during this deliberation. And it's signed PRR, and then the references are all listed in the laws that they came up with. The second one is addressed to members of the council. This cannabis fair, for that's what it is in the end, is a bad idea. Right in front of City Hall, blocking the middle of town and easy access to our police station. Do the organizers of this event forget that Humboldt children suffer from some of the highest cases of ACEs, which is adverse childhood experiences, scores in the state. This includes substance abuse, which is not limited to that of illegal substances. Now, you want to put that right in the middle of our town. Also, you want to mix alcohol with cannabis. That sounds like a great way to up our already high domestic violence case count. We don't even have parking for the people we do have now, and you want to add more. Our police don't seem to do anything about the kids who drive around on lawnmowers, ATVs, dirt bikes, not to mention all the speeders and other traffic violators. And now you want to add morons who are high to the mix.
Be very slow.
Yeah, this seems like a great idea. Where we promised that when this was made legal, that it wasn't going to put it up and be put in our faces. Now, not only am I going to have to smell and see it, but hear it, too. Where did that homeless go? A not-so-happy resident, signed Victor. And that's it.
Thank you. Well, hopefully, we will address these issues. Hopefully, if, you know, um when it, if and when the plan comes together, these topics will be addressed as Mayor Portem brought up originally about, you know, the placement on it. Um, we might have to look at a different placement, we don't know yet. Um, but I appreciate the comments. I'm sure we all appreciate the comments because we do have to work with the citizens, not, you know, just the, it's not about the farmers, just about farmers, or just about the citizens. We have to work together to make it work for everyone. And if it is something that is going to like make this huge, tremendous, bad image or bad feelings in town, you know, I think that we'll look at it, I think a group will look at it. They will hear what citizens say, we will hear what citizens say, and um hopefully those things will be taken into account. And so I do appreciate all the comments, good and bad, because we have to take all of those things into account before you can make a decision on something like like this. Because it does affect everyone. So um, thank you for their comments, and thank you for being here and for your presentation. So thank you for their comments, and thank you for being here and for your presentation. Is there anything, city manager, that I need to?
Just want to double-check that there were no hand raised. I think that was it. It was a sick informational presentation for the council.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you very much for coming and making the presentation. So now we will close that and move on to ordinances and special resolutions. Approved Resolution Number 1528-2022, declaring the need for continued in-person city council and commission meetings for declaring the need or declaring the need to resume with virtual Zoom meetings. Page 36 in our package. Sitting on it there.
Thank you, Mayor Gornes, and members of the council. So this is just a standard pro forma item for the council's consideration. We are on the tail end of the pandemic. And so I think staff can safely recommend to continue with the current setup of the hybrid meetings that the council so wishes. I don't think it's necessarily something we need to deliberate on extensively if the council is in concurrence. Obviously, the situation can change, so it's possible the next time this item is brought up, you may need to make a different decision. But hopefully not. So with that, I will return back to you.
Does anyone feel there's a need to deliberate? Because, well, then, with where we are? Okay. Frank, are you there? Or do you? Do you have anything you want to say, or do you agree with continuing as we are tonight?
I agree. We need to do with the hybrid situation. Like I say, I fully intended to be there tonight. And I got the call, like literally walking out to the parking lot on my way home that had some things because of the gentleman that I was working with that tested positive. And so I think we need to have the option for people to have this hybrid thing. We've, we could maybe still use some refining, but one of the things about the pandemic is it has given us the ability to allow more people to participate. There's people that may not be able to physically get down to the City Hall that could, that could participate and give comment from home on this. So I think it's something that the hybrid thing needs to go forward, I would say indefinitely, so more people can participate in the meeting as well as being physically present. And that's just my opinion.
Now, does anyone in the audience wish to make a comment?
On behalf of Nick and the Planning Commission, we think the hybrid way of going about the meetings is great. Please discuss that.
Thank you for that. Are there any hand raised or emails? So is there a motion to continue with the in-person hybrid meeting?
Zoomed by Johnson.
We have a motion, a second?
Second.
By Woodall. We have a motion and a second? You want to vote? Frank?
Yes.
Question carries five zero. Thank you very much for that. And now we move on to council reports and communications. Mayor Corrigan.
Thank you, Mayor Gornes. I want to commend Water Superintendent Jensen and his crew for a very, very timely turn-on of water for good friends of ours. The utility workers stayed after 5 o'clock to make sure things were working well for brand-new residents of Rialdel, their first-time homeowners, and they have a good experience with Rialdel. That's important. So second matter is that tomorrow morning, I'll be having a Zoom meeting of last-chance-grade stakeholders and going to be talking about, I think it's going to be, the subject is giving information to all of the stakeholders groups, the backup groups, and trying to establish that there is a consensus on the direction that the stakeholders go. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall? Not much. We have a Humboldt Transit Authority meeting this next week, and Amanda and I are going to do a ride-along with Mary, our CSO, next week, so that should be interesting. And that's all I have. Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you. I also wanted to thank Derek and Randy because we went on a fun little field trip with them to see the water tanks up on Temple Street. It was really nice to get up there, and, but we have heard about them a bunch. It was nice to see them and put eyes on that property up there. It was nice. So thank you, guys. I had a rededect meeting last night. Not too much to report from there, except that we are really working to get some more flights from Portland and Seattle. Nothing's for sure, but we're working on our ride. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Yes, just, we have, I have an HWMA meeting coming up next week. And in that, if you're interested in coming, there's two topics they're trying to primarily address, one being that they replaced the recycling center at Hawthorne Street with a area to process the 1383 organic waste issued. It is, is going to be more than big in every jurisdiction in the state to get rid of that organic waste, that food waste essentially that you throw in your garbage can and goes to landfill. Now there's a state law requiring that you find a way to filter that out and then process it into compost plants or get it out of the county and go somewhere else so that, separate from green waste. And once they do that, they also, that means they would have to relocate their current recycling center, which is all the other stuff that comes, that's not CRV, but goes into the recycling at the place. Rialdel's covered on that part because it goes to Fortuna Recollege. But we are, we are involved, even though we have short deferments for a couple of years with the 1383, and we're signed on to that, and we're participating in that. So that's good. The other thing is, also at that meeting, they're going to talk about restarting CRV redemptions. The people, Ambro, that were going to do it in Arcata. They have various things in the news, but they've told HWMA that they're probably not going to be able to get licensed for an additional six months. So if they ever are able to pull it off with all the regulations, what's going forward? In the meantime, everybody's got lots of CRV, and there's lots of CRV on the side of the road. It's becoming a trash hazard. And so that's a discussion about whether or not they want to resume CRV redemption for the county. So those are two good topics, if you're interested, and it's done via Zoom. You can watch it, I think, on YouTube as well as Humboldt Access. So looking forward to that. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I have, I yesterday I had my Senate confirmation hearing for the Seismic Commission, and I think it went well. And I have a meeting tomorrow evening with the Red Coast Tsunami Working Group in the capacity of the Seismic Commissioner. A seismic meeting next week, League of Cities meeting next week. And I think that's, that's all I have. And then the Traffic Committee, Humboldt Traffic Committee meeting next week. So next week's going to be a lot of meetings. But anyway, I think that's all. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
You have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second, meeting adjourned until March 15, 2022. Thanks, everyone, for being here.